There's still, it's still.
Oh.
And Gary, but the location, yeah.
But the location, which this is.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
He was, he just.
All right. All right, the time is six oh one P M. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the city council, the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. All right, and council, we're gonna start with calling to order. I wanted to just recognize that this is the last full session that we'll have with our current council. We are, for the public's information, planning on meeting tomorrow during a called meeting to canvass the election and seat the new council and also say acknowledgements to outgoing council members, Mayor Protem Carmona. So, the reason we're doing this is kind of a thing that happens every election cycle is that Travis County has to certify the results before we can officially meet to seat the new council based on the results. So, they're doing that as of today, they'll be certified, so we can meet tomorrow to actually see the new council. Otherwise, you know, we might, you know, the timing might work out to where we actually could do it on our regular meetings, but that'll be a called meeting tomorrow at six o'clock. We are not taking any actions other than seating the new council tomorrow and also just council and council that will be coming on. One of the things that I want to wait until we have our first regular meeting is that sometimes we, with the first meeting, we put some agenda items on there or we even like elect, you know, Mayor Protem and we do the liaisons. I would rather wait until we have our first regular meeting so that you guys have a chance to consider and work, you know, on what your potential motions might be for those actions. That'll be on December sixth, and so that's just more information for the public as we move into our election. And I want to thank all the candidates who ran, you know, I think this is, it's especially, you know, in our city, it's an important aspect, the fact that we can engage so much in our government and, you know, appreciate everybody's participation in that. And then tomorrow, we'll be recognizing Mayor Protem Carmona for his service as well. With that, we're gonna open up to public comments. As the council has a note, there are three comments that we record in Open Gov, two related to the open space plan, agenda number ten, one related to the city facilities, agenda number eleven. With that, though, hopefully you've had a chance to read those. We'll go ahead and open up for members of the public that wish to speak at this time.
Danny, 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 oh, there you go.
Talking about a pay raise for our police department and then ask Alfonso Carmona to put that to some, to some thought and share it with you. So, and you know, when I, Alfonso, I've been, I respect you because you sit there in that chair and you have a lot, but this is your last, you know, you told me you're, this is your last term, so there's something that didn't, you know, and I understand because there's other people that have been isolated up there as well. But you had also electioned, when you got placed in that chair from this community, you electioned that you believed to hold businesses accountable. I heard you say that. Bad businesses should be held accountable is what I heard you say, Alfonso. So, I asked for two things, and one was to shut it down for its bad behavior, and I will share that with the next council at the next meeting. But at this council meeting, I'm asking Alfonso to sponsor our police department for a pay raise initiative, and you can certainly find some young children in the community to sponsor to harvest honey.
Danny, your microphone also got turned off. When you touched it, yeah, there you go. Hold on.
Shouldn't be touching this. The PD, Alfonso? It's got a little red light that's supposed to light up, and I don't see it. There it is.
Yes, it's not, it's not a.
Let me just look at it this way. I have control of the mic. So, okay, that's wonderful, and thank you so much. That's a kind effort from you. So, I'm gonna share this information with the next council about the abuses that I've suffered and the power of the state is passed down through county commissioners to small municipalities, to A I S D doctors and principals. So, we got a lot to talk about. Words out of the Bible.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that wish to speak at this time? All right. With that, we're gonna move on to agenda number three, which is part of our regular reports to council. This is the Planning Environmental Committee report, and Carolyn, I think you're gonna be presenting this information.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council. So, this is the Planning Environmental Committee report, and we kind of went back to the month of March to go over this, and mostly, I mean, the committee worked a lot on the comprehensive plan over those months, kind of came up with some recommendations that went also to budget and finance for consideration for projects for the F Y twenty-three year. They've also worked on, you know, supporting and recommending some joint committee meetings that have also occurred throughout the year. There were also some different recommendations regarding outdoor lighting and what, you know, where council can go with that, as well as more comments and stuff on the comprehensive plan. One of the last things they worked on was also that the relationship really between the community garden and the city hasn't really been codified and written down who's responsible for what and how that kind of works. And so, they have a community garden codification that they reviewed and will be sending to council probably on December sixth for review so that we can kind of clarify what that relationship is with the existing community gardens and if there's any other community gardens in the future, what that relationship would look like. So, there's that item there, and they'll be working on, they're very excited. They started talking about the rainwater harvesting and water-wise landscaping initiative, and we're gonna start diving into more of that in the next few months. So, if there's any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for the committee report? All right. Thank you, Carolyn. Moving on to item number four, which is council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. And council, if there's any recommendations or a motion to approve on consenting the items. Councilwoman Rosenkron.
I move to approve on consent. Agenda items number five, the November first meeting minutes, number six, temporary special use permit, number seven, changes to H R, number eight, police vehicle purchase, number nine, granting of an easement on city-owned property at sixty-four oh one Brody Lane for access to sixty-four oh five Brody. And that's it.
All right. The motion is approval on consent, number five, six, seven, eight, and nine. Does anybody wanna pull one of those items for discussion? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I would like to discuss number eight.
Number eight, the person, the police vehicle purchase?
Yes.
Will that item's pulled? Any other items that we wanna pull from this list? All right, so the motion is to approve on consent, item number five, six, seven, and nine. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. And Councilmember Johnson reminded me that he seconded, thank you. And just for making sure that we record that in the proper order, I'm gonna vote again since we have the second. So, all those in favor, since we have a proper second now and I did the vote early, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. All right, now we're official. We approve on consent, item number five, which is the minutes from the November first, twenty twenty-two regular meeting. Item number six, approval of a temporary special use permit for the Trail Lights Foundation to operate a shuttle service at the Tony Burger Center, thirty-two hundred Jones Road on Berry Estates in December twenty twenty-two, in coordination with the Sunset Valley Police Department for a traffic plan. Item number seven, approval of amendments to the Human Resource Policy Manual, one point oh six, administrative authority. And item number nine, approval of an easement for city-owned property at sixty-four oh one Brody Lane for the construction of a water line. With that, we're gonna go back to agenda number, item, agenda item eight, consider approval of the purchase of one police vehicle from the Salisbury Ford in an amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand dollars using repair and replacement funds. And Mayor Protem, we'll start with you since you wanted to pull this one from consent.
No, go ahead. It's all right.
Well, if we are looking that, number eight, where you will see funding, and in this case, I don't see that in the budget. So, in the budget, it wasn't funded.
It's, it's coming out of repair and replacement, but it was originally sixty thousand, but the current estimate is sixty-eight thousand. We were gonna cover the difference by auctioning one of the twenty seventeen police vehicles.
Yeah. I support the police, but in this case, I think that we have some procedures. And we discussed that previously, and at this moment, we start with the new budget. And looking that, in the budget, page one forty-one, repairs, vehicles, it wasn't there. So, we don't have in the current budget and also in replacement, also, we don't have that. So, if you will go to page one forty-one from the budget, then that is for equipment repair and replacement. So, is there, so, it's fifty-eight forty-five, the account, and fifty-eight forty-five, it has zero. It doesn't have money.
Right, so, and that is confusing, I know, but these were the actual amounts that were approved. So, there was a, there was a transfer of four hundred and twenty thousand or, or four hundred and twenty thousand set aside for repair and replacement this year, and these, these were the amounts that were approved by the Budget and Finance Committee. They just didn't make it, I guess, Kyle, right into the codes below. Because these, I'm looking at page one hundred and thirty-seven of the budget document where it allocates the four hundred and twenty thousand for a hundred and thirty-five thousand for vehicles, thirty-five for I T assets, twenty-five for P D key gear, seventy-five K for.
It should be fifty-seven fifty-five, not fifty-eight forty-five.
Oh, yeah, so it's, so it's fifty-seven fifty-five, and I believe the backup said fifty-eight forty-five, which is vehicle acquisition. So, that was just a mistake on the cover page. It's actually coming out of this line item here, fifty-seven.
I cannot see nothing.
Fifty-seven fifty-five.
Only looking the book, in the book. So, what is that page?
This is page, and make sure you're looking at the final adopted budget. So, this is.
One forty-one.
Yeah, it was just a mistake in the, in the cover page, so this was, this is the line item that it's coming out of.
Zero. What page you've got?
The one for the budget. So, what is that page? What is the number?
This is the repair and replacement.
Yeah.
Yeah, the. If you got that out of your book, that was the.
His page is different than your page.
Okay, yeah, so this is the final adopted budget?
Yeah.
That was the proposed budget?
Fifty-seven fifty-five, also is nowhere. And I was looking also the, the department, the budget, then I tried to say this. When you have a, when you have a budget and you are specific, you cannot have that as a, as a pool. So, that is no one amount of money that later you will be using whatever you want to use. This is not the purpose. The purpose to have accounts is to be specific. And these accounts, they don't show me that. So, this is why I was looking in bad budgets. I was looking the budget from the department and the budget for the equipment repairs. And it's true, they put that money, but they don't say where they will spend that money. So, at this moment, when they show sixty thousand dollars, it's something that they took from the air because it's not here.
Council reads.
He's correct in that fifty-eight forty-five is actually the vehicle acquisition. So, instead of the one hundred and thirty-five thousand being under fifty-seven fifty-five, it should have been up at fifty-eight forty-five. Is that correct, Kyle?
That probably is a more accurate account for it.
Yeah.
The budget the chief is using to purchase the vehicle is actually in the crime control budget. There's a, there's a fifty-eight forty-five line item in the crime control budget for sixty thousand.
Okay. Okay, so I think that was just a error that needs to be corrected there.
Excuse me?
Yeah, we're actually talking about a number in the crime control budget, not the repair and replacement budget.
So, what will be the number? From which page?
So. It looks like it's one seventeen on the PDF of the budget, and it's the crime control budget?
And you have that? I don't believe so, eh? We will see.
One eighteen.
Can you be kind and blow that up some more? I know you lose the last, last column. There.
I apologize. Yeah, that's the, that's the line item mentioned in the cover page, which is from the crime control budget, which is.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, department nineteen.
Councilmember Rosenkron.
I just wanted to say that every year, we have a schedule of when the police vehicles are, what their date is and when they were purchased and how many years out and when they're anticipating replacement. So, we immediately put money aside for the replacement.
So, the correction will be, that will be in the crime control instead of the repair and replacement?
Yes.
So, the other four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, they steal for repair and replacement?
So, that actually won't, so that won't be affected by this purchase, right? Because this was a planned replacement of a vehicle out of the crime control.
Yeah.
And then the difference will be from a vehicle that will be auctioned off, the twenty seventeen Ford Explorer.
Okay.
Which has an auction value of over nine thousand.
Now, for curiosity, if you have that vehicle, they say that the cost is forty-two thousand dollars. But later, if you want to have as a patrol, it's almost sixty-eight thousand dollars. So, the difference, why?
It's, it's all the equipment that's outfitted into the vehicle, the computer, the emergency equipment, the striping, all of that stuff that turns a regular vehicle into a police vehicle. That, that's the cost associated with that.
Yeah, I am curious because sometimes I saw in the budget that they request computers for the vehicles. Now, in this case, when I saw the twenty-three thousand dollars, I saw that they will paint that, they will change the tires. So, they don't say that, but it's a package. And in that package, I don't know if it's clear about the computer and other kind of things, but you say that that will be. So, you don't need to add additional money for the computer.
We purchase the computer, we budget for the computers separately, but they charge to install the computers and to take out the old post and all those things to put in the new. They give us a whole upfitting charge for, basically, to make that interior of that vehicle into an emergency vehicle. They do one upfitting charge. Some of the stuff we have, like the computers, we take the, basically, the guts from the old cars and put them in the new cars, but they charge us to install all that into our vehicle.
Okay. Okay, only I was curious for the difference because we purchased one car, the new was forty-two thousand dollars, but later, when I saw the other things, painting, maybe they will charge you nine thousand dollars or something because they, they will change the color and they, they put extra. So, only I was curious for, I'm sorry?
Now, you say to change the color they charge us?
Well, I saw the quotes, okay? And when I saw the quote, they said, the bid price and first was forty-two thousand nine hundred twenty-six. And later, they say they will add twenty-three thousand dollars because they will change, they put exterior royal blue color.
No, they don't charge more for the color. That, that's just a note to tell, to tell us what color we ordered, to verify that we ordered the royal blue, but they're not charging us extra.
Yes, so that the note that they have there, need to change color once approved, that doesn't mean nothing, right?
No, no, it's, that's just a note that we ordered the royal blue, not the standard
Yes.
white color.
Okay, so, not putting too much pressure, Chief, but at this moment, how many patrols do we have?
How many patrol vehicles?
Yes.
Five.
So, they are one for each, you have one and one for each head, and later, you have another two and two for the police, right?
Now, we have, they share, there's twelve police officers and they, the patrol officers share the vehicles. There's five vehicles, so those ten patrol officers share those five vehicles.
Okay, so, basic, if more than one person is driving, some people, they drive in different way than others. So, sometimes when we say five years to replace that vehicles, that doesn't means, because maybe some of them, they, they drive different than others. So, or did you see no difference?
Now, they're on a five-year rotation. We know five years out that we're gonna order a new vehicle, no matter what condition the vehicle is in. Some are in better shape than others, and that explains why our repair, our repair bill might be different year to year, but we ordered, we know now, if we order a vehicle, that five years later, we're going to be ordering another one due to wear and tear.
Okay, so, and you, you replace them maybe three this year, two next year, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you very much, and according with the papers that I have, this is why I was curious. And the most important is because four weeks ago, we approved another for public works. So, this is then I was thinking, well, it's not bad that they need to request that in budget time. So, that was my, my curiosity. Thank you.
All right, any further questions on this item? Council reads.
No, I was just gonna make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the purchase of one police vehicle from Salisbury Ford in the amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand using the crime control funds.
The motion is to approve the vehicle purchase sixty-eight, not to exceed sixty-eight thousand dollars using the crime control funds, which is a correction from the agenda listing.
I second.
And second from Mayor Protem. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. All right, motion pass. All right, so council, the last two items before we go into executive session are kind of, I would say, things that we want to get some input on, especially as we're going to be, you know, seating a new council and going into our planning season with the new council. And so, just to set the sort of framework for item number ten, which is the, the final draft on the Parks and Open Space Plan, this is the, obviously, the, you know, the committee that we put together worked closely with the agency that, the Asher Robinson that put together the draft and sought input. We've already talked about this as part of our budget process where we wanted to make sure we, we move forward with certain activities that will prepare us for things like Upper Cougar Creek planning or beautification. What I'd like to do with this item is really give direction to staff for things that we want to bring back for our, our retreat, right? Things that we can start planning for and, you know, we have a, that will have an effective retreat. We'll discuss retreat dates tomorrow with the new council of when we're gonna hold that. We don't have to take action, and in fact, I'd encourage us probably to, you know, give feedback, give input, give direction to staff. You know, if we are gonna take action on parts of this, you know, I certainly want to also make sure that we're considered of the new council as we, you know, include them in the planning process. So, that, that's something that I'd recommend holding off on taking specific action on. But that being said, what I asked staff to put together was kind of summary of where we're at with this plan, and you also see information there regarding zoning, proposed zoning changes, some of the, the, the other items that we've got listed here are our budgets that we've set aside or, you know, for potential use in different areas. And so, with this, I'm gonna hand it over to staff for introduction of this item and making sure that, you know, we get kind of the assessment or the information that they compiled is informing both the council, the next council, and the public as we go forward with our planning in this space. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Matt.
Okay. And, yeah, I'm gonna hand it over to Carolyn soon, but I just did want to mention for the, these budget items, so these first two are within the, are within the, the sort of the operating budget, and these are for management, so open space management for, you know, existing, you know, conservation and nature areas. So, these funds were, you know, initially in the budget to maintain essentially what we already have. This line item here for adopt a bench is a new line item that, that is if someone, you know, does want to adopt a bench. This is funds that the city can go purchase a bench or benches, but that would be reimbursed by the person adopting the bench. This is really the money that was allocated this year to implement some of these projects that were discussed in the Parks and Open Space. And the breakout of that is of this three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, which comes from the overarching eight hundred thousand dollars from Parks and Open Space Plan, planning, was twelve thousand for the Sunset Valley Nature Area Trail Link, sixty-five thousand dollars for trail signage and sign upgrades, including maps with Q R codes, and then two hundred and sixty thousand for Upper Cougar Creek, implementing, implementing, you know, a trail and possibly other amenities at Upper Cougar Creek. The parking lot specifically set an ADA loop trail. So, just wanted to give that background. So, when you see these two items, these really are maintaining, these first two items listed in the table are funds for maintaining what we already have and this new program, the Adopt a Bench program, and then this three hundred and thirty-seven thousand was earmarked out of the overall. a Bench program, and then this three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand was earmarked out of the overall Parks and Open Space funds.
All right, so I'm just gonna kind of go over a brief overview of the final Parks and-
Mayor Portem?
I have one question. Uh, we have in the budget for open space and planning, seven-hundred thousand dollars, and we have another one-hundred thousand. So with that eight-hundred thousand, why came now to four-sixty-three thousand?
Excuse me, the difference is, so the four-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand is what's left over after we've allocated the three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand to possibly be spent in this fiscal year budget. So the, the three-thirty-seven combined with the four-sixty-three is the eight-hundred thousand total from that special fund.
But who approved the three-thirty-seven?
The, when the budget was adopted, there were three items, there were really four items, twelve thousand, fifty thousand, another, twelve thousand for the Sunset Valley Nature Trail Link, fifty thousand and another fifteen thousand for signage and, and sign upgrades, and then the two-hundred-and-sixty thousand for the Upper Cougar Creek. Uh, and I can pull up the parking lot that was approved on September twenty-seventh.
Well, then I am curious, is the, then we put two-sixty-five only for, uh, Upper Cougar Creek, because when we discussed at that time, we were thinking to spend money in, in a trail and try to keep that in natural way. And when we saw the plan, we can add some of that things from the plan. But at that time, we were looking eighty thousand dollars, because according with this plan, they were, they were thinking to have that, uh, in order for ADA, all the trail, and later we have discussions and it's not possible for, uh, impervious cover. So, at that time, that, if we tried to do that with a impervious cover, was two-hundred thousand dollars, because, but if we, if we were working on with that, was less. So, then I am afraid, and I support that, but then I, I am afraid that if in one moment, we put all the money in one side, we need to be very careful, because it's a good size, and I agree, but we need to be sure, then, uh, we will spend that properly, because looking in that way, you say two-hundred-and-sixty, and, and you know where that will be? So that, that covered all of that points, and I was talking about the trail?
Yeah, the two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars was for the trail at Upper Cougar Creek, and it would be an ADA accessible trail at Upper Cougar Creek. It'd probably be granite gravel, but it would be ADA accessible. Once you have a project that goes over fifty thousand dollars, you're required to have TDLR review and have ADA compliance, so it's gonna be a requirement for that trail.
Well, not necessarily, because we have a lot of places, and you don't have that.
True, and that, that's very true, but we're also talking about creating a connection between shopping centers. So that will require some, like even when we built the playground over there, we had to have ADA requirements met in that area. Now, you don't have to require every trail to be ADA accessible, but some trails need to have ADA accessibility.
Well, in that, in that place is because we want, we want to have people, and we, we want to attract people-
Yes.
Then perhaps they, they came with, um, wheelchairs, et cetera. This is then we wanted.
Yes.
But, okay, so, at this moment, because when I was looking at that plan, so we were looking also in, in different places, five-hundred thousand, three-hundred thousand. So at this moment, only we are focused in Co- Upper Cougar Creek, we are not thinking in uplands in this place?
So the projects that were funded in FY twenty-three did not include the uplands at this point in time. It just included that, the projects that Matt just outlined right there. That was what was funded in FY twenty-three. So when we kind of go through this plan, we'll kind of talk about what is the next steps and things that, looking at grant funding opportunities and different things of that nature to look for the future of planning in Sunset Valley.
Yep, so for that reason, how much money do we have now, and how much money we spend?
So it looks like we have three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand of the eight-hundred thousand that has been allocated for this fiscal year, which leaves about four-hundred-and-forty thousand in, in, in the, in the committed budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, Carol.
So just to kind of go through, um, the plan, um, so Ashkara Robinson was our consultant on this plan, and then they've kind of put together a final draft of the plan that kind of incorporates all the various pieces that were, um, developed along the way into one final document for the city to use. Of course, it has existing conditions, and that includes looking at some of the, you know, the existing plans and kind of tallying what was in those plans and how they interacted with different parts of what the Parks and Open Space Plan will propose. It also looks at the Parks and Open Space in context with the wider area around Austin and where there are other parks and different kind of amenities that are nearby. Um, it talks about, um, the different areas, and we have areas that are kind of parks and open space, kind of areas that are more green space conservation, and then some areas that we're calling opportunity areas, because they may not have, they may not have fallen within either of, any of those categories at that point in time, and just to look at those areas and see what the opportunities are. Looked at circulation patterns, obviously Brody being our, and of course, two-ninety being our biggest, um, roads and traffic circulation throughout the city. Um, and also looking at the community at large, and not just Sunset Valley, this is Census Block Track, and looking how things had changed demographically for this area. So back in two thousand, um, mean incomes, different things like that, were all different than what we have now in, what was recorded in twenty-twenty. You also see that we have, uh, it, it seems to be trending younger with more children in the area than, um, previously. So our two largest blocks are really the elderly and children, um, in, within the area. And then it also talks a little bit about the hydrology and some of the natural areas. One of the things that they did as part of this project is they did some park assessments, and they had two different versions of that. They had one that was more a park-oriented assessment, and one that was more of a green space conservation area-oriented assessment, because we're looking at different factors in those areas. Green spaces don't tend to have as much, um, amenities as a park you, you would do. So they basically did an assessment of one through five of each of those areas, five being everything was abundant, everything was in excellent condition, and one being that maybe there were missing things, or it's not very appealing, and some other characterizations like that. So one being low and high, five being high. And so they took each of those areas and kind of averaged scores for different, the different parks in Sunset Valley. Um, so for example, if we just took Valley Creek Park, um, it really had about average on, you know, park access and some of the features that were there. Um, but then when you look at safety and maintenance, everything was, you know, maintained, everything's mowed and kept clean. Um, similarly, if we looked at, you know, City Hall, it doesn't have a lot of park features, but it has a lot of, so it makes it more of an opportunity for some different, um, benches and shade structures and things like that in the area. So they did different assessments for different areas, and then from this, they had, you know, what, what is the opportunities that were presented with the Parks and Open Space? And part of it is to cluster activities at different parks in the area, to draw people toward, we, um, one of the things is to draw people together and create a signature park near the commercial areas, so that would be the Upper Cougar Creek. Connection, and that, and you'll see that, that comes up a lot when we look, look at the, um, trails and what people were really wanting, that connectivity, and making sure that, you know, there's a clear network of trails or sidewalks or different things of that nature. Um, one of the biggest things that came out of the, um, survey was preservation and ecological restoration. Um, also to communicate how to get around places, so wayfinding was very important, and to integrate some of the ADA things into some of these experiences in the system, just to create some equitability. Um, there was a pretty extensive public engagement process that the city went through. There was a public survey, um, and so we had about a hundred-and-forty-four residents from pretty much every street in the city, um, respond to the survey. We had, um, kind of got a kind of distribution of ages in, in the city itself, once again, kind of looking at that, um, young population and our elderly population, so we've got a little bit of both. Um, some of the things that came out is that the majority of people who are in Sunset Valley use those trails and use those Parks and Open Spaces. And the ones that are the most visited are some of the larger areas that have the most connectivity right now, which would be the Lower Cougar Creek Green Belt, the South Hills Conservation Area, and, um, South, Sunset Valley Nature Area. So those are all very well-used. And what people do on those, in those areas, is they walk and run on trails, they explore nature, they walk their dog, they visit the farmer's market. So there's a lot of activity that, um, people do, um, in these areas, and of course, like you said, hiking and going through the areas is probably the, the big thing. Some of the things that, you know, people, if you look at some of the comments, things that people kind of mentioned, um, in the comment section was, you know, you know, bicycles and dogs, offleations. So those are things that the city will need to probably consider and kind of look at as far as our regulations. Then there was also a section of the survey where you looked at how supportive and not supportive people were of different activities, and so we kind of combined the not supportive and not supportive and somewhat not supportive with, and the somewhat supportive and very supportive together to kind of give a picture of what it is we're looking at. So maintaining the existing parks, very supportive, um, updating the rec- the community kind of recreation at the parks and updating those, um, locations. So I think that would be this updating, you know, some of the features behind here at City Hall, um, and updating those areas, and just creating more amenities as well. So picnic shelters and picnic benches, and maybe even some lights and some trash receptacles and different things of that nature in those areas. Um, nature pace recreation, so trails, nature play, those kind of things ranked very high. Um, having more community gardens in our food forests was ranked pretty high, too, as well as environmental signs. Things that kind of were not very supportive were things of like putting a bike park or, um, a, you know, skate park and things of that nature, did not have a lot of support. Um, Big Vella Way type pathways, sports complexes, those did not have a lot of support. So overall, the top three priorities when they looked at the Parks and Open Space Plan was enjoying nature, trails and cadence activity, ecological restoration. When it was just talking about parks in general, it was definitely the rewilding and native plantings, as well as unpaved hiking trails, and having the community gathering spaces, having places where people can, you know, sit down and picnic or enjoy time with their friends and family out in the green spaces, or, or in the parks. And definitely in the green spaces and conservation areas, it was to protect for future generations, that ecological restoration and leave as is. In addition to the survey, the, they also did a couple speak-out events. Um, one of those was at Public Works Open House, where we have a lot of residents, as well as one at Doc's Playground, and kind of just had maps there where people could say, where, where do you enter into the green spaces and what do you do there? And, and a lot of the things came out similar to the survey, and then, you know, here, I use these areas. You can see the areas that were the most popular. Similar is Lower Cougar Creek, Sunset Valley Nature Area, and South Hills Conservation Area. And then what they did is gathering, walking, you know, you know, walking their dog and, and just spending time out in nature. So all of this information was gathered, we then took it and we worked with some different concepts, and the committee, um, the Adha Committee, kind of reviewed all these concepts and kind of came up with these different concepts of what can be done at the different areas in the city. And that's where we kind of get down into, um, what the main themes are of, of these different areas. So for example, the Gaines Green Belt, if we just kind of, we can just kind of quickly go through this table, and you can kind of read each of the others, but, um, the Gaines Green Belt, it's, um, maintain and restore, do restoration projects out there. Um, it's on a hill, so firewise maintenance is very important. It already has a trailhead established through the Violet Crown Trail, but just having that trailhead there and making sure it's, you know, well-maintained in the future of that area. Um, I would say that if, uh, being out in the Gaines Green Belt, that is probably our most visited area by non-Sunset Valley residents, because if you ever go out there on the Violet Crown Trail, it, there are a lot of people out there all the time. So, um, it's a, it's a, it's a very important area that the city has. It's also, you know, in dangerous species habitat, so it's important that we maintain it and, and keep that well being, well-maintained. The uplands, um, and the idea was really to kind of create some nodes within the city, and then one node would be at the uplands, another would be at Upper Cougar Creek, with City Hall obviously in the middle. Um, and having different areas of activity and kind of concentrating them and creating connectivity between the different areas. So having that kind of really cool destination playground kind of thing at Upper Cougar Creek, but because there's so many limitations for impervious cover there, maybe having a pavilion, a multi-use kind of pavilion at the uplands where everything can kind of connect together. And I think, you know, the idea is that, you know, there's just, you know, people walk, I mean, if you've ever been to ACL or different things like that, people will walk, park and walk to different activities if you plan them out and have them spaced, um, where they can kind of have that access and you have, especially have had nice trails and wayfinding signage that link those areas together. Um, in addition to that, creating, um, a little gateway entry and really a trailhead to kind of have a little trail that goes through the uplands. Um, Upper Reese Drive, um, there's some opportunity for some trail connection, um, possible loading for the farmer's market area. Um, the idea was always to keep that trail that along the edge in case we ever decide to put in a road on Upper Reese Stadium Drive. Um, we met with the, um, Montessori School recently, and they're very interested in having some access to Stadium Drive, which is on the north side of the elementary school, and creating a road there so that they can improve some traffic circulation. And we've got some other discussions we're having with AISD about connectivity as well. But we are looking at, um, you know, a possibility of a trail there that would link up and create some more connection opportunities, but to keep in mind that we may eventually build a, some kind of two-way, two-lane road in that area to improve traffic circulation around the Jones Road and around the elementary school and Burger Center. City Hall would be a, you know, City Hall is by far probably our most used trailhead. People come here all the time, park and use it. We don't have a very defined presence behind City Hall, and so really kind of defining that area, creating the entryway into the trail system, creating a trailhead, having some sort of nature play so when we have events here, kids can go out and play and have some kind of shade structure that's there so that, um, because it's really hot out there, um, and just, you know, have, and of course, the community garden, but creating some, um, a cohesive area behind City Hall that kind of melds all of that together so that it's, it's an inviting place, and it is where people kind of come into the area. Um, Upper Cougar Creek, that is, you know, to have that ADA accessible trail, to have the, you know, do floodplain restoration in that area, to, um, have a, that they, you know, a lot of people talked about in the committee about Butler Shores, um, having a destination, really cool kind of playground area there that really attracts people and gets people to, um, spend time in the area, you know, grab your snacks at, in food at the places and then come in and play and hang out. Oh, and the other thing that it is, is that we also talked about putting disc off in that area, because it's a very low-impact activity, very inexpensive to do, and it attracts a lot of people to a space. So there was that kind of possibility. And so, all of these, when we talk about these nodes, I mean, they, they all will need further definition and refinement, um, to, to move forward and to move from a conceptual kind of design to a more schematic plan that we can actually build from, which is what we're already kind of doing with Upper Cougar Creek, is moving forward with that trail and, and kind of designing that space a little bit better. Um, a lot of the other areas are really kind of keeping, you know, making sure they have wayfinding signage, making sure we're doing more restoration in those areas. Um, Valley Creek Park, the idea there is to, you know, replace with similar kind of low-impact equipment at some point, um, just to make it, you know, a little bit safer, but not, not anything like super crazy or impactful that is going to, you know, draw big crowds to the area, because it is at the end of the street, just something simple. And, and really catering to that younger kid crowd, because that's usually what we see a lot there, parents with younger kids at that area. Um, and then, like I said, trailhead, na- nature education, things of that nature, and some of these other areas like Indian grass and nature area. Um, then we have some of the areas that are more of a opportunity areas that may not have, um, current, uh, they, they don't have anything really on them at this point. So one is sixty-one oh seven Brody, and so the committee discussed having, um, creating parking and trailhead there to kind of move people off of Oakdale and creating a little- people off of Oakdale and creating a location there where people can enter into the parks from Brody Lane in that space over there. And 6401 Brody is an area that, looking at, you know, making it a community garden, kind of food forest, working with nonprofits and having some type of public-private partnership to develop that area and have, where it is a community space, but it also has some, you know, assistance from other organizations to help manage and maintain it. And so that's one that I think it will take a lot more research and a lot more time to kind of develop that a little bit, to refine that idea, but it has some interesting potential. So those are those different, and of course, there's a lot of places where they're talked about adding in some public art, especially like the Jones and Westgate Entry, updating some gateway signage and just making sure that, you know, with the beautification plan, working hand-in-hand with that so that we have some continuity between all the areas. And so it does go through and kind of define each of the areas a little bit and can definitely answer any questions about that. And then what it does is that it kind of goes into how we can find funding for these activities. So it gives us a lot of ideas of different grant opportunities there are for some of these. So there's a lot of trail funds, especially with Texas Parks and Wildlife that we can go after. Playground, Kaboom is usually a playground activities, so that could be a source of funds for some of these activities. And what they've also done is looked at what the TPWD grant requirements are and where they are in the Parks and Open Space Plan. So when we apply for the grants, that, where we could pull that information from. The only thing obviously we don't have is the proof of adoption, so that would be through an ordinance at some point, once we adopt the plan and say, this is what we're going to be doing. They've also put in some partnerships of different organizations. Some of them we work with already, like American Youth Works and Texas Conservation Corps, but also in Hill Country Conservancy also. But developing some partnerships with these different entities so that we can, you know, coordinate cleanups and different activities throughout the area because, you know, things that come through Sunset Valley can pass down through the city of Austin and it's a good idea to have some partners for that. And they also have a lot of public art partners in there, too, to kind of look at public art and how we can partner with some of these organizations regarding some of the art installations that we want to see in the city. The other things they have, they do have an opinion of probable construction cost and so they kind of detailed all of this. Of course, this does not include design consulting on any of these. These are just estimates for construction with quite a bit of contingency included, too. And so the overall cost is a little over $4 million. If we had a separate pickleball structure and we didn't have a multi-use structure, it would add, you know, not too much, about $160,000 in there. There was a question about a pool and so using the, I think it was the Go Valley Pool, which is not a very big pool, that's about how much it costs, is about 2.8 million to build a pool. So kind of looking at those different alternatives. And then we also put in some anticipated maintenance costs for those areas as well and how to maintain them. And that would be based on, some of it would be based on developing as park areas as well. So not just if it's, there was a different rate for green space maintenance versus park maintenance. There's a lot, a lot of different things that go into that. So that is the basic plan. The committee worked a lot of hours kind of refining that, coming up with the recommendations, trying to integrate all of the comments that were received, all of the survey information, into something that the city can say, okay, these are the areas where we're going to go. One of the things that council had asked before the project started was to look at the zoning categories for some of those parcels. And so they did have zoning recommendations and that would be at 6107 Brody to move that to park of some variety. 37 Lone Oak for Conservation Area since it connects directly to South Hills Conservation Area. For 6401 Brody, I think it was GUI considering it would be a combination kind of project and be public-private partnership on that. And then I think the uplands, I think, was a park recommendation. And uplands is currently GUI. So there were, they did kind of look at that because I know at one point council had asked for some recommendations on that and that that be considered as part of this. So they did have those recommendations that came out of that. And basically, I think, you know, if you go back through, if you go back to the webpage with the Parks and Open Space Plan, this page is on it, but you also have all the categorized survey responses for those different properties. So if you look at 37 Lone Oak, it's kind of categorized and shows you how, what people said about those, what, in 6401 Brody, all of them. There was, I think, a little bit of confusion between the two Brody properties, but I think uplands and 37 Lone Oak was pretty straightforward. The existing conditions report is there, so it does have the kind of timeline of the different activities and then the final plan. And so if there's any questions at this point in time, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Carolyn. And we said this before, too, but also thank you to the ad hoc committee members who put in all the work on this effort. It's pretty amazing, you know, I think that this is a great blueprint. Not only, I was really intrigued by the potential to get grant funding and using this as a tool for that. It gives us a way to document, you know, where we're going with potential grants, requests or partnerships. One thing I was going to, kind of just to make sure that we're connecting the dots because this is a kind of important piece, is that when we approved our budget, we obviously didn't say, we're going to go, we're going to fund 4.2 million dollars.
Right.
Right, all at once. And I think that's a lot of consideration for the work that's been put in here, but also what can be done in phases and what can be done in a year. There's a lot of work left to do in terms of like, you know, where we get to and how long it's going to take us and how we fund these things. We did take specific action on certain items, though. And so if you go back to, can you go to the, this page, Matt, the one that starts breaking out these costs? And just so we're connecting the dots, what we actually set aside budget for, for these probable costs. So the first one is the Sunset Valley Nature Area Trail Link. And I think that is under the Sunset Valley Nature Area. Is that right? Where is that one? It's not listed on there, but it was a recommendation. That was a separate, it was not listed in this plan. So that's $12,000, that's doing the trail connection for that area, but it's not one of these items. The next one we had is the trail signage and $50,000. That's really kind of spread throughout each of these areas, right? So wherever you see something that says, you know, signage or, you know, wayfinding, it's another item as well, right? So wayfinding or signage. So it's really, the $50,000 is covering multiple areas, but it's an upgrade to our signage across the system, right? So that was something we funded. We also had sign upgrades, including maps with QR codes for $15,000. It's tied in with that last item, right? As we put in signage, we want to put in some, you know, ability for people to look up information on our website or connect to more information. That's where the $15,000 is. So those two together are really sprinkled throughout trail signage, wayfinding upgrades. The last item that we had was the Upper Cougar Creek, which is the ADA accessible nature trail loop for $222,000 and 93 cents and 30, $93.30. So we, what we wanted or intended with that from the council action and discussion when we adopted the budget was that we weren't ready to commit to the play area. We weren't ready to commit to, you know, designing gathering spaces or installing more permanent structures like bike racks, but we did want to have a way of accessing that trail or that area and connecting it within the shopping center and to the playground that's already existing there. And that's going to require, you know, engineering is going to require landscape work. And we also have pending right now an RFQ for a landscaper firm or group that can work with us on a contract basis, starting with the Upper Cougar Creek, but we potentially could leverage them for more than that, right? If we like what they do. And that RFQ is going to be coming back to council. It'll close out at the end of this month and coming back to council potentially on the 6th, right? And so council, I just want to point those out, that while there's a long list of things here, we did decide to take action on funding some of them. The trail signage upgrades being a big component of that and then the Upper Cougar Creek being the other, the ADA trail being the other component. The rest of these are really, you know, what I want to work with the, you know, discussion coming from this council in terms of like where Mayor Protem Carmona wants to provide feedback before the end of his term into our process, but also more specifically with the next council as we all meet as a group and prioritize what we want to do with this plan, where we want to go pursue funding opportunities, partnerships, where we want maybe to come back with some more discussion with the community on prioritization. So with all that being said, I really am appreciative of all the work and what we have here, I think, is an excellent document just in terms of just its presentation, its formatting, it's the, you know, the culmination of everything that's been done. And again, thank you so much to the ad hoc committee for all the effort here. I do want to, you know, open up for the council to provide their comments and questions for staff. I'm excited about this. This is something that, you know, when I see this, I see public arts, you know, art in public spaces. That's one thing I really love us to move forward with and that may be like a priority for me, but I also see a lot of opportunity for us to make our trails, you know, even better than they are. And I love being able to access and use the trails and I want to make sure that we're taking this feedback and planning for that. But with that, open up for council discussion on this item. Councilmember Johnson.
I can, we'll probably talk about this a lot more, especially with the new council, but the 6107 recommendation for switching to park, there's like the three layers of zoning that are kind of green. And I think I've asked this a few times, but there's a suggestion for parking on there and if you do it like conservation, you can't really do parking on it. So is, is this a situation where we can kind of like, kind of slice it up and say like, that's going to be in the back, we'll do conservation and we can do park in the front so that we can put a parking lot on it? Or is it just like, just leave it as park and?
I think it would be as park, though, because generally zoning designation is going to be the whole property. So if you do this park, that requires, that has the access. And we are looking at changing some of those zoning categories to all park and have like a park one, park two, park three. It probably would, it could be more of a park two at some point if we did that, but you can't really, you could definitely set aside and say this is going to be more conservation at the back and you could even do like a conservation easement on it, but as far as zoning goes, the whole property would be zoned as one.
Yeah, it would be through easements, you know, deed restrictions, but yeah, you can't, you know, you wouldn't want to subdivide the property and then parcel it out and, or have two different zoning categories. It just needs to be ones, the way our code is, it's one zoning category per property.
All right, and I can easily look this up, but the Mailing Tract, is that conservation or is that? What is that zone?
I think it's green space.
Green. Green space, okay.
Green space, yeah, the middle, the middle level.
So yes, I think this is a beautiful plan. They did an outstanding job. The, a couple of concerns or thoughts, not necessarily concerns, but more thoughts on it. One is, I did make the suggestion that we put out a newsletter with this plan so that all residents see the final plan because it's really hard to find on the website. You've got to go, it's under CIP plans and it's like, that's not real obvious to, certainly not to me and I would assume most people. So I think that would be an important thing that we vet this with all of our residents so they can get their ideas in there, too. So the other thoughts, I am concerned about the cost. The 4.5 million is high and that's a lot of money. And we need to look at where is that, where are those funds going to come through? Yeah, there's some grant possibilities. I'm not sure we even have grant writers on staff. Now, we can hire some of that out, so we would need a definite plan for that. But we might, you know, when this plan was developed, they basically took every piece of property that we own and developed a fabulous idea for each piece of property. And I think that's what their job was. But I think our job is to look at the scale of it and see as a community of 800 people, do we need everything on this list? And do we need, can we look at it, prioritize it so that we can get some things done well versus a little bit everywhere and such like that? So that would be my concern, that we prioritize and we really focus on what's the better approach to do. The other thoughts are, so it's a scale and a cost issue to me. So it's a communication issue, it's a scale and a cost issue. For example, playgrounds, there's a number of playgrounds, you know, we probably have 160 children that live here apparently. Do we need four playgrounds in one mile scare, you know? And that's like a million dollars. And so it's something that, it's not that I don't like playgrounds because I love playgrounds, but it's something that we ought to really think through. Farmer's Market, have we communicated with them that they would like their farmer's market and set back on the uplands property? Have we had those communications? And I didn't see anything on the triangle in there. If the farmer's market moves, there's nothing going on in the triangle, correct?
We have signage.
Just signage? Okay. And then, oh, and by the way, I did hear from AISD, my first request for the pickleball courts was turned down because it's not a UIL sport. I've gone back to them saying, well, what if we had tennis courts that were striped for both tennis and pickleball? And the first person I talked to said, well, that might work, but I still haven't talked to the other person that makes the decision. So keep your fingers crossed, I'm not that hopeful, to tell you the truth. And, okay, so let's talk about the master plan thought process. What I don't want to happen is what happened with the uplands, where we have this beautiful plan and it wasn't complete buy-in and so nothing ever happened and yet we had planning environmental committee members work so hard on that and they put so much effort into it. And I think they were quite disappointed when nothing happened. And what I don't want happening is the same thing with this plan. So I think we need to prioritize. We need a, some sort of, it's not, the word disclaimer comes, but it's not disclaimer that this is a, these are possibilities, you know, but they're not set in stone, that we can add, we can modify, we can subtract. And I think other people might want to get their ideas in. You know, I talked to a resident, you know, it's like, please, more bike racks, you know? He's tired of chaining his bike to a garbage can, you know, things like that. And so, so there's a lot of things that we, that are, all of our residents might be interested in. So somehow we need a process where that comes back into it. So I think those are my main concerns. Clearly, I think we need to prioritize what properties we want to work on first. The one concern I have, and this is just me and it won't be popular, I'll just be perfectly honest, I am fiscally conservative. And I, I do think of some of our properties as money in the bank, as our savings account. If things ever go sideways with us and we need, you know, we have property. Once it's developed into a park, it's going to be very difficult to change that around. And that is the, clearly that's the goal for some people to do that. But, and I, to be honest, I'm struggling with this because I think it's important that we have assets, but I also think if we can afford it, we should do something. So I struggle with this and it's something that I hope everybody on this council will struggle with because that is our responsibility. We are fiscally responsible for this city and we have to look long-term. And I will tell you, I never would have anticipated a pandemic. I do not think these next coming years are going to be great. I could be pleasantly surprised, but, you know, we have challenges coming up, I think. So I just, again, I'm very conservative and that, and maybe I need, just need to get over it, but I think that is our responsibility as a council to struggle with those issues and to work through that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosinger?
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson and Reitz. And yes, I feel the same way. One of the majority things that we are responsible as a council is One of the majority things that we are responsible as a council is the safety of our residents. And so when I look at 6107 Brody and 6401 Brody and we're considering turning them into green space or parks, but yet we have property that is over by Reese that floods and those are properties that could be green space easily. We're, we're taking a good piece of property off the market so that we can have green space that isn't connected to anything else. And the ideas are valid ideas, but making, making a property, a government GUI property when we have other properties that need mitigation would be my first concern. So I would consider as though that those properties should remain as they are, using them like a savings account and using venue tax to purchase properties that flood, that would be my consideration. And great job done on this. So, thank you.
Mayor Potem.
Yep. And tomorrow will be my last day, as the mayor, he said, but today I have one opinion. And it's amazing how we grow together than perhaps before I have some affinity to everybody in this table. But now, after two years, then we are working close, all the things that you say, I agree. So that, that's amazing, that's amazing, because that is, that is important when we are looking and we say the environment. Well, the environment is flowers, trees, animals, these different things that we have. Looking a restaurant, I cannot eat a good soup if that doesn't have maybe some bacon or, or butter or other kind of things that give it to me the flavor and the spices. So that diversity is so, so good. I think that this year, one committee, they took the initiative and also with the director of public works as a support and they came, they were working so, so much with this plan, the Ad Hall Committee, and they hired some company and they developed an incredible, an incredible work. Now, I agree, I agree that we have two plans at this moment in the shell. One is uplands and the other was upper Cougar Creek. Then when they show us, was amazing. So we have two plans. At this moment, we came to a third plan. So now is time, and that is difficult for you because you will be the new guys, but you need to define, not discuss negative, more productive, and we need to start producing because it is amazing that sometimes we, we don't produce too much. So we have a lot of ideas, but they let that in that way. So as you say, at this moment, they have to prioritize. I don't want to repeat that, but we need to have that goals. And if you will sit down in two weeks, city council, retirement, oh, retirement, oh, you So when they, they will spend that homework, I'm sorry, I took this morning some pills for my pain, eh? Maybe you don't know, but I have a lot of pain and by doctors, they gave it to me some special pills. I am no high, but sometimes I am lost. So talking about that, I, I think that we need to define, and you, when you will be sitting, you need to have a plan. And again, who will be the project manager? Who will be doing this? And define responsibilities. And if you need to hire somebody to start doing that direction, perhaps we need to hire somebody to do only that project so we can spend so much money, but minimum that person has that responsibility. And that let you that, but we need to move. And I agree, I agree because when I am passing and looking all of that natural, all of that grass, I am so happy. And when I am driving and I pass 15 years ago or 20 years ago when we tried to purchase one lot, I, I can see the, the value of the land as a land, not necessary to produce. So we need to keep that in mind. And that doesn't mean that we are liberal or conservative or whatever. We are humans and we are not stupid. So, and that is the most important. So the value that we are looking here, they don't have in any place. So when we are looking 600 people or 650, whatever, that area that we have, nobody has that. So this is the value of our houses now, that we have so much area open. So please, when you will sit down in two weeks or four weeks, try to have in your mind that maybe you need to hire somebody and let that person to be working only with that project. And this is a project and that project need to have some results, not a project to produce all of this paper, that is also good. A project that now we have this, now we have this, now we have that, in a specific, not general. And again, it's amazing that the citizens, the citizens, they, we needed, they, this is a voice than, nobody likes that critics, nobody. We don't like, because we, we don't like that, but they need to be in that way. And following you, I, I think that that is for you, Mark, because now, Mark, for you as, as a mayor, you, you need to have more and more responsibilities and it's hard for you because if nobody did, nobody's doing nothing, we can continue and this city will be another 10 years. And for 10 years, nothing, nothing. We can see all the rules. There were more of that 2010, 2012. So now, since years ago, this was a revolution. And in that revolution, we need to continue in that way. We need to move, we need to move for the best. So this is important for you, but you cannot do it. If you continue, if we continue in the way, I am afraid, then if I will bring people, the people is unhappy. No, perhaps we need to bring people in order to produce. And if we bring people, project manager, not the project manager from the company that was doing the job. He's a project manager, he's somebody different that doesn't have any deals with us, only that guy or lady, they will produce. So please think a lot in that way. It's nice when I saw the papers about the grants. Grants, sometimes they don't give it to some people than they have in the bank, 27 million dollars. So you want, then I will help you and you have in the bank 27 million dollars? I don't give it to you nothing. So other people, they don't have nothing, they need more of that. But we can be realistic, so we can find some partners and work with partners. And, and I believe that, so I don't want to take more of your time and thank you for your time with me, that you were so patient with my age and that, but this is that I say.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Councilor Rosinger?
I'd like to spend a little more time on page 19. No, the one where it shows the creeks. Right there, that one right there. So if you look at the three tributaries to the Williamson Creek, you see all three of them run and get, the widest part is right there at Reese and Sunset. So when you look at that and you think, our job as council is the safety of our residents. And then you look over at 6401 Brody Lane and you see where it's located, it's nowhere near the creek. Now notice another thing, look at a lot of the green space around the creek area. So we're mitigating for the runoff areas around the creek, we're keeping most of the, the green space around the creek area. This one sits all by itself, way out there. So the idea of having that connect to any of the other parks, I can't see it. Whereas the idea of purchasing land on Reese and having that as additional park, I can see it. It's near all the area that is water area. When it's dry, we can walk all of that area. It just, to me, it makes logical sense and I'm hoping everybody can see what I'm looking at right there and can envision just putting more green around that heavy blue area right there on, on Reese and on Sunset. Thank you.
And you're suggesting the 64 instead of doing the step ups?
Either we do nothing with 6401 right now. I know there's a house on there and the more, the longer you go without doing anything, then the more the property becomes unmaintained and so on. So all I'm, what I would prefer would be that 6401 not be included in the green space, possibly be sold, and then we purchase green space property on Reese.
And this is something that I need to familiarize myself with more, but the 62, the terms of the 6401 purchase, was it made with any kind of restrictions like we had on the, I know that it was, the intention was, you know, that it'd be preserved for conservation or green space area, but I'm not sure legally, if there was any restrictions on it when we purchased it.
Legally in the purchase, both the city attorney reviewed the, and the former city administrator reviewed the deed and the deed does not mention it having to become park. I think there was some
Correct.
Thought in the community that it, it would just automatically become park, but that was in, in the actual deeds of the sale of the life estate to the city, no, was not, that was not a condition.
Although it's sort of similar to, well, I mean, similar to 37 Lenoke in that at the time when it was
Purchase.
Purchased, it was, there were commitments or discussion around that, if not legally.
And it was around that time that the city enacted the venue
Right.
Tax as well. So that kind of, that purchase was a part of that whole community discussion back in 2008, 2009 around the venue tax, which was for watershed protection. Yep.
Yeah, I think that consideration in terms of what that property, that's a, that's one that we, you know, obviously the input from the open space and planning, it's also city-owned property, it's, you know, one of these things that we have to be careful about how we use and preserve it, you know, in some cases, if we want to make sure that we're, we're honoring commitments we made as a city as well. That's something I want to review, going back to the, the original purchase, because I know that was the, a big discussion around 37 Lenoke as well, you know, just in terms of like how the committee, or the committee that formed around the purchase of that property. So I do want to open up for members of the public to give feedback and input. Council, I really appreciate your, your feedback. I'm taking notes so that we can incorporate this as part of our planning when we go into our retreats. Certainly my intention is that we move forward both carefully, but to what Mayor Potem has been saying, you know, over and over again, we can take action, you know, for things that, that, that we want to move forward on. And I think that's, the time is for us to, to prioritize and take action on, on, on areas. Whether we do that through staff resources or we want to augment it with additional outside help, I think that's something that we can discuss at our retreat as well. So with that, I'll open up to members of the public that wish to speak at this time for this agenda item.
Lisa Versace, Pillow Road. Thank you for everyone reviewing our plan that we worked so hard on. Thank you, Carolyn, for presenting it really quickly and we value you and all of your work that went into it so much. You've been incredible to work with. I just wanted to say, in terms of prioritizing things going forward, it's kind of already in the plan. We did survey a large sector of the population and we did find out their priorities in this process. The residents all had a chance to weigh in multiple times throughout this process. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that the prioritization is there and we are moving forward hopefully incrementally based on the feedback that we've already gotten from the residents with regards to all publicly owned properties that are in the parks and open space, hopefully planned in the future. As far as deed restrictions, I think I'm pretty sure the city owns the Southern Moore property on Brody. Like, it's part of the purchase agreement and I recommend everyone get their hands on the purchase agreement, that one of the stipulations in gifting it to the city from the family was that the city owned the property like in perpetuity. And I don't know exactly the legal language, but it is in the, in the purchase agreement. As far as purchasing land with green tax dollars going forward with venue tax dollars, I would recommend that the city not do that if the intention is to hold it and use it to make money off of because the green tax fund was set up for water quality watershed protection. And I feel very passionate about this, that when voters vote on a ballot, city council should hold true what that ballot language intended. So when the city council decides to purchase property with a fund that was voted on with ballot language, they should hold true to that and not go back on it, try to make money on it to fill the coffers of the city. Purchase it with general funds if your intention is to profit off of it. If it's in the flood plain, like the northernmost property is on Brody that we're looking at, majority is in flood plain, that is prime candidate for watershed protection. And I understand the intention, purchasing it with green tax dollars. Sorry, my heart's beating fast, I get kind of emotional about it. I just think that city councils should be held accountable for when voters vote and they make a big decision like that, to take their tax dollars and put it into projects, that's the ultimate form of trust we have in government, is you guys need to spend our money and also take care of our safety, which would include protecting properties near flood plains, which protects our home values and helps protect damage. So anyway, just going forward, I would say, in terms of prioritization, I just want to go back and make sure that everybody understands it's all laid out already there. And having people comment on the current plan has been a part of the process all along. We've never, we try to incorporate all the comments from as many people as possible and come to a happy medium. One of the comments from council was that, and multiple members of council said they didn't want a pickleball court behind City Hall, so we found a very good solution, which would be to place it under a pavilion with the farmer's market. I think my time is up, but thank you and I really do appreciate. I think my time is up, but thank you and I really do appreciate everything.
Thank you. Maybe I also wish to speak at this time to this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh.
May I ask her a couple of questions?
Sure.
Lisa? May I ask you a couple of questions? One is, uh, did I miss the prioritization of this? I don't, is it in here?
Yes, there's a ranking that has percentages attached to each type of priority.
That was done with the survey?
Yes, the ranking is, um, the ones that agree with a statement or disagree with a statement. Like I would like more sports venues. We had a fair amount of people disagree with that. I would like more trails. I would like more conservation. So we have agree or disagree, strongly disagree. Carolyn, you can pull up that page. That is like a ranking of priorities of the public.
Page. I just, okay. So the priority list, okay, and I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
I think a survey is very different from a cost benefit when we look at cost. And we have to, we have to pick and choose at some point because we can't do the four point five million tomorrow.
No.
So we have to prioritize that. So there is nothing that is, uh, your, your committee did not discuss that. Is that correct?
We did. We discussed, um, ranking the order of, um, projects based on the survey results. So because we saw that preservation, protection, restoration ranked very high, we decided to invest in the green spaces that were existing and create wayfinding and do restoration in those areas. That was a part of the initial. We also recommended to council to look into using some of the green tax watershed protection funds to maintain and restore these areas, um, which would definitely fall into that category. So was, we did rank and prioritize based on our council recommendations, that huge document that we presented to you. Um, the first time when we presented our budget, um, that did have prioritization for this year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Gonzalez on Reese. I guess I just want to reiterate, reiterate what a different resident said about the importance of land. And, um, and that when it's gone, it's gone. And, um, I've heard that echoed a lot as I've been in conversation in the city. And, um, and I, so, so part of what Lisa said really resonates with me. The, the idea of, uh, having twenty-seven million dollars in the bank and people in the city were still upset that we lost staff when we had that level of support. I can imagine the uproar if we lost land with that level of backup, you know? Because people feel really strongly about our dirt. And even with development, you saw in the survey how much wild people wanted to leave, you know? In the face of massive amounts of people saying, let's do all these things. There's, there's a very wild element to this city. Um, and even with the development of lots, I mean, when I came on Reese, one, you had a swoop. So you didn't even see the elementary. And I was, I was in favor of, of cutting that swoop on, on, on that road in Reese. But there was a sad part too, because it was safe for those kids that I thought were going to get squished as they were skateboarding down that hill. But at the same time, the city was gone. I never saw Jones from my end of the street. I was in a, in a place away and, and I, and as I came down that hill, I just saw open land. And even across the street when I moved in, there was an open lot, you know? And then in the course of twenty-five years, all these lots have been disappearing and it's gotten less wild. But those properties that Rudy is referencing on, Dr., uh, Councilmember Rosen Garden is referencing on, on Reese, people have bought Ford's wildness and they may or may not want to sell it. But, but that, that feeling of raw is a big piece of Sunset Valley. And, and people often say, can't you just leave it alone? And so I just want to speak to these people who keep saying, can't you just leave it alone? You know, as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak at this time? Counsel, as I mentioned, I, this is input that's valuable for us as we go into our next, um, seated council and our planning sessions that we have, um, that will be discussing timing of tomorrow night. Um, we do not need to take action on this item. In fact, you know, I think what I'd like to do is continue to collect the feedback that we have as we go into those planning sessions. And it's valuable also to give the, the, the public an opportunity to continue speaking and engaging with council as, as well. And, um, this is also fitting that, you know, we have another chance for Mayor Potem to provide his guidance and counsel for his last two years with us. Um, much appreciated, you know, the, the work that he's done and we'll certainly miss him. With that, if there's any further discussion on this item, I think we can move to agenda number eleven. Unless there's any further discussion. Councilmember Rosen Garden?
I just wanted to say one thing. It's in the back of my mind.
Sure.
Uh, when the statement was made, when the land is gone, it's gone. Well, that's kind of how I feel about money. When the money is spent, it's spent. And so I'm very fiscally conservative and I like to make sure that we're going to be, uh, into the future very healthy financially. Thank you.
And somewhere between those two, there is enough for bike racks, I think is what. Hopefully more, but yes.
And, and I would just add, I think there is value in just keeping the land as is, uh, without putting, uh, things on it. Uh, just, just keeping our land as it is.
Yeah. And I, I think there's, yeah, we've gotten that input quite a bit as well. And I think that's something for us to, to weigh heavily before we make, before we make changes, we want to make sure they're the right changes, right? All right, Counsel, our next agenda item is presentation, oh, did you have any, oh, did you?
What can you guys say as long as you want?
Next item is presentation of possible action on City Hall facility use rules and regulations. And I'll hand this over to staff for introduction of this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So the reason this item is on the agenda, we've had an increase in the number of residents that have been asking, you know, we, we actually had a resident come in today that wants to book it for a social event in March. So we've had a, we've definitely have seen an increase as, you know, we're, we've, we're gone are the days of pandemic restrictions and social gatherings are happening again. And I think there's just been a buzz of, of when can we use the facility again? And it's been kind of awkward sometimes saying, oh, well, we're renovating when, you know, there are plans, but we aren't actually physically renovating City Hall. Yes, there's a lot of, a lot of things on our to-do list regarding City Hall, but, um, I mean, most days and weekends, it's just sitting here unoccupied. So I did want some direction from council moving forward, maybe a formal action, perhaps, you know, bringing back the facility use, but maybe placing some restrictions on it while staff does, we, we need to research. I think it's a time to research our fee structure. Uh, the, the fee structure hasn't been visited in a while and I think it's time to just look at other, uh, what other cities do. Um, it, a lot of other cities, at least in the immediate area, don't have a facility, facility like this necessarily that they rent out. A lot of cities have park pavilions that they rent out. I believe a staff member told me that she believes the city of Elgin has a community center that, um, you can rent out. I've also done some preliminary research looking at what Circle, Circle C has club rooms you can rent. Wells Branch has a community center you can, you know, that their residents can, can rent. So just looking at some of those fee structures and, and ours are very low compared to, um, to those areas. Also what makes this different than, uh, you know, pre-pandemic when we were renting out the facility quite often. I mean, there were many, many weekends were booked, you know, for a variety of, a, a variety of events, social events, religious events. We've had all, all kinds of bookings here at City Hall. Um, but one of the, the differences is now we have wired microphones, you know, and we've got equipment now set up. Um, and so it's just going to take, it would just take more time to prepare the room if someone wanted to, uh, you know, use the, use the entire chambers. It would take a lot more staff time to take those microphones down and the equipment down and put them away. Public Works is working on a way to hopefully, um, I don't know, how do you want to explain it? But basically a way to, uh, to have the microphones a lot easier to
Hide.
Hide and, yeah, and so it'll be a lot easier. If, if say the chambers were rented out by a resident for their person, you know, for their use, it would take a lot less staff time to basically put the mics away and bring them back out when we need them for, for council. So that's really what we're looking at. And then another item is, uh, we've already discussed this before. I believe it was a staff report last month about the lobby. And, you know, the lobby, again, there's no one officeing here currently. Um, these chairs, you know, this table, they've been here since I've been in, around in Sunset Valley. So they've been here a really long time. Um, and, you know, while they're, they're rustic, they're also, you know, very large. They take up a lot of space. I think if we had more modern modular furniture, we could make a lot better use of that room when we have, say, city events. You know, more, more people could sit down. Actually, let me bring up, Carolyn found some, um, pictures today. These are just ideas. You know, I think these are, this is like the Office Direct, that's a member of the Byboard. So again, these are just ideas of what we could put out there that you can reconfigure, you know, move around really easily. Uh, these pictures, for example, if you've all been over to the E O C, we have those tables that are movable. They have, you know, power cords underneath. If we had those, uh, for example, here, you know, we could wheel them out when we need them for staff, hook the microphones up, hook the monitor up. And then, you know, when we need to put them away, we just wheel them out, similar with these types of chairs. So these are just all options that we want to explore. Um, and if council is, is willing, maybe we move forward with going ahead and just getting rid of the furniture that's out there that will let us, you know, just use that space. And while we're, um, while we're reconfiguring the, the microphone wires to make them easy to put away. And maybe we say, okay, we're not going to rent the council chambers, but if we have the, you know, rather large cumbersome furniture out of the lobby, that, that could be a space that residents could use to set up tables and have social, you know, parties and social events, whatever they, they used to rent the facility for. And then also the conference room, um, we want to put modular furniture in the conference room as well, uh, just to allow more, more, more use, more use out of that room because that table is just rather large that's in there right now. So any, I'll take any comments, questions, we can kind of talk about, for just, just for example, you know, for the rules right now to rent the, there's no cost to rent the
Conference room.
The conference room. But if you want to use, if you want to use anything other than the conference room, then there's a charge. It's minimum of twenty-five dollars and that's for four hours. And then it's only ten dollars for every additional hour and that hour includes setup, breakdown, cleanup. So you, you know, if, if you're going to have an event from, you know, let's say noon to five, but you want to get here at, at ten to set up, you know, we would say, oh, well, you'd rent it from ten to six. Um, and then it would be, it would be, that would be like a fifty-five dollar rental for that, for that long, from ten to six. So that's the, and that's, that is just from looking at what, for example, what Wells Branch and, uh, Circle C community centers, that's way, you know, a lot less than what they charge for their facility rentals.
Yeah, and, and this is something I know the C D committee's been working with in terms of the use of the space. One of the nice things about a small community and these buildings is that we want to be able to capitalize on them and use them for residents' purposes or for things that the city puts on and sponsors like the, you know, the events that the C D puts on. Like the winter solstice is coming up, it's going to be, you know, time. But there, we have also deployed a much more technologically, you know, in massive footprint, right? You know, just compared to where we were in terms of like the microphones, we have the equipment in there that, you know, uh, behind there we have monitors. And we want to make sure that we're also not putting those elements, you know, um, in, in risk or damage of, you know, of some ways. But just the consideration of what it would take for staff to clear this space out, twenty-five dollars is not, that's, that's not to cover the staff, staff time to do that. So I, I certainly would be interested in, longer term, I want to make sure the space is usable and in open. I think temporarily, maybe it makes sense to keep the, the lobby, our lobby area is restricted, you know, access restricted over there into the conference room, but keep our conference, our council chambers until we go, go through a full redesign. You know, leave these off the, the rentable or reservable table. So I'm going to start with Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Rosen Garden and then go back to Councilmember Reese.
Thank you. Yeah, like you said, the, one of the benefits of being in the, in a smaller city, we have more access to this and I don't even, I kind of like that outside groups, as long as the, the resident is here, they could also kind of take, take advantage of it. Because this is like one of the, you know, if we think about like, oh, you get mulch or like these like little, like this is like one of the best things that we have to offer our residents. I, for a lot of, a lot of my work, sometimes there are these things that I do over and over again. And as I get better at them, that's, as I repeatedly do them, I get better and find like efficiencies there. And so I'd even be open to opening this space up. I know Matt's probably looking at me like, god damn. But I, I think Duncan, it will probably be Duncan, uh, would get really good at kind of breaking this down and setting it back up. And as he goes through that, write it down because currently, uh, you know, if Duncan goes, goes on vacation, we're kind of like, you know, so like it, the, the process of breaking down and setting up, I think is like a very healthy exercise. And it's a time when all this can kind of be captured in a document of some sort. There, there's certain things, he did a really good job of kind of cleaning this all up. And so everything is kind of pushed out to the periphery. I, I hope it can kind of exist around the outside and allow people to be able to use this and not really mess it up, like accidentally cut one of the cords or something. But there might have to be something done. Also, I mean, this will be expensive, but I think it's a good idea anyway, just like kind of figuring out a way to, like that is trenched in the concrete or like it was laid in the, the concrete and there's another one out there somewhere. So that might be something that we want to do. Sorry, there, there is a, uh, like a, just a plug, like a
I think there's a couple.
Flora.
That, yeah. So it, just in the future, it might be something that we want to look at because that, we have these expensive facilities and then we have, you know, just like the, the cord tamer over there. It'd be nice if it was just like a box, you open, plug in the microphone, whatever. So maybe when we go to do the whole, you know, spruce up the, um, the City Hall, we start looking at that kind of stuff and that would only make the, the breakdown and setup even quicker. Yeah, I agree that it's, it's fairly, um, fairly cheap. I think twenty-five dollars, as long as we can capture how much time it takes for staff to do that so that the city isn't out. I do like that we have basically a free option because some, like if you have a knitting circle, are you going to really pay twenty-five bucks a, uh, a circle? What, what is the term that they have for that? Is it any circle? I thought there was like a special term, kind of like, um. Anyway, so yeah, that, that's my thought. I want to, I want to get back, people back in here and feel like they can use it. When I used to really use, uh, run a meetup group for I O S developers, we used to use that conference room every month for five years or something and it was, it was great. And every time, uh, we had it there, someone was like, you get to use this for free. It's like, yes, so definitely it's awesome. So, um, yeah, I'm excited to get people back in here. That's it.
Councilmember Rosen Garden?
I have a different viewpoint. I have a viewpoint that we shouldn't mess with any of this because I can look down and I can see all the wires down here. And everything that it, the time it takes just to set all this up costs, costs somewhere down the road. So my recommendation was if you go to page one of six of the reservations, um, number one, I would change the facility to City Hall Conference Room. So right there, the first, number one under reservations, the facility, change the facility to say City Hall Conference Room. And then it continues with everything being the same down to the end of that where it ends with facility. And then from there I would start, the City Hall Diaz Chambers may only be used for events that do not move the staff or council table, podiums, didn't know what else to call these, or chairs. And then I suggested we charge fifty dollars for the council chambers. We presently charge twenty-five and twenty-five for the conference room. Again, both of those are very, very low costs. And that we replace lobby furniture with city chairs to be used for meetings so we could use the lobby. could use the lobby for meetings. And I did like the idea of the chairs like we have in the CEO because you can move them around, use them for different events. And then again, on 13, to repeat, no use of city audio or video equipment unless it's a city meeting or a committee meeting. And then I kept on making notes. And then the next heading, use of city equipment, not allowed unless city meeting or committee meeting. And then on the heading where it says, end of event checklist, number 13, have the police officer on duty phone number in case of emergencies. Because I've been here helping somebody with some event and they didn't know how to lock up, and so it would always be nice to have the officer's phone numbers in case there's an emergency. That's it, thank you.
Councilor Reed.
So I have a little bit of a different opinion.
That's good.
One, I think the, I like the idea that our cost is, is inexpensive, but it needs to cover cost of service. And so I think there can be a quick analysis of what, how much it costs, what is the actual cost of service, and that's what we charge. I'm not real keen on one group using it every weekend, you know, that's not what I think needs to happen. I like it, a lot of groups using it. I don't have a problem with this room being used if we can, as you say, we can break down things quickly, we add that into cost of service, and maybe that's a higher cost of service if they use this room that's for breaking out. Because I can actually see this would, this room here would actually be a lovely wedding area, you could make a nice wedding, a little reception area out there. So I, I see people, some of, some of our residents might really like that, so. So, and then my, my last comment is on the furniture out there, let's keep it until we know what we're going to replace it with. I think the modular furniture is the way to go. I, my suggestion is maybe, do we have any interior designers that live in the city that we can, can work with, and maybe they can give us some good ideas?
Lisa Kopp.
Christina Canella.
Okay, maybe we can contact her, and maybe she can give us some good ideas and good leads and stuff, and, and make it really, you know, if we're going to invest some money because, you know, furniture is expensive, and so let's, let's do a really nice job with it, so.
And Carolyn's going to provide some updates on the acoustic, so she got some, a quote for the acoustic.
We did get a quote for the acoustical panels in here, and it'd be recovering these because the color kind of looks really dirty now against that wall. So it's going to be to use all the existing panels, and they're going to put a cedar frame around them, kind of matching what the doors and stuff look like. Because actually moving the panels slightly off the wall gives them better sound absorption. So we'll be doing that, and we'll be adding a few more panels as well, as well as hanging about eight from the ceiling. So we did get a quote to make that happen, it's about $8,400, and I think it will make a huge difference in the sound quality of this room. And I guess I can speak a little bit to what we kind of are discussing regarding being able to hide a lot of the cords and whatnot. I, you know, we, there is a possibility to drill into the foundation, but it gets very expensive. So we were looking at the possibility of almost creating like a, like a faux baseboard wall kind of thing against this, so that you don't see the cords, but we would still be able to access and get to the cords as needed. And that way they could just hide in those spaces when the building's not, when the building's being used by others, and that way then we can just pull them out when they need to be used. So I think we have some ideas of how we can try to adjust so that the wires, it makes setup and breakdown a lot, lot quicker and easier in this space. Oh, and then the other thing we had talked about is going ahead and painting the foyer similar color, so it all matches, and ripping out part of the water fountain area and putting in a bottle filled water station over there so that people can, so we can stop using these as much in that area. So that would be the conference room, we're looking at painting as well, but we're going to do that in-house. We don't have to rent any equipment and go up to the ceilings in there. So we will be doing the conference room and cleaning that up and painting it the same as this room. Public Works will be doing that, probably, it may be over the Christmas break.
Any further comment on this? Mayor Portem.
Yeah, I suggest then, for the next city council members, if they can have a new chairs, not these used chairs, then the Ros, the family of Rosengarden, they gave it to us, use it.
And
These, these were new, these were not, not the, my donation. My donation is all back in the conference room.
Okay.
These are all, these were all new when we got these.
Well, these kind of chairs, I think that
You're rough on it, is what it is.
No, 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 look, and look, I have more body, so I, I have more cushion. And what happened when I leave, I live in that way, so, no. I, I, I think that maybe it's no bad idea to start thinking also in chairs for members of the city council, and it's no bad idea, eh?
And if the, if the intention is that this space becomes more usable, more versatile for the residents, I do think that while these are lovely pieces, we had, had them recently refurbished by Art, you know, over on, on Sunset Valley, did a great job, moving this around, you know, it's not really, you know, something you want to be doing if you're having like an event, like a wedding or something like that. So I think we'd need to look at furniture that might make it more modular, if this, the intention is to make this. But again, until we know what that furniture is, I don't want to get rid of anything. But I do like the idea of coming back with some options, and if we can, work with Christine, Christina potentially engaging to see what possibilities are out there for furniture to bring back to council for consideration for that lobby area and the, the conference room. The other thing, I think, Matt, if we can get a more fine-grained assessment of staff costs for the current configuration, so that we can assess if we want to revise any of the fees, if we do consider opening any of these spaces back up so that we, before we do, we actually are, you know, accounting for all the staff time that we would need to as part of the fee structure. And the other note, I think just for residents, I saw them working on the Arbor today, so it looks like they're going to be doing the upgrades on the outside as well. So it's, we have the wood, we're just now getting, you know, all the old stuff torn down. The one request I had for my kids was, will there be swings when we build the, because they miss the swings?
I, I am hopeful that once we, because that was, the main thing was because the boards were kind of old and rotten.
Right.
I'm hopeful that when we rebuild it, we can bring the swings back.
That'd be great, yeah, because I think that was always a fun thing that they looked forward to when it came to City Hall.
It's nice to have the swings.
Any further discussion before I open this up, or comments from any members of the public? All right, any, any of you who wishes to speak to this item, please step up to the microphone.
Lisa Versace Pillow Road. So a couple of things, we just did soundproofing for our studio, and we're recording there every day. And one of the things that we found made the biggest difference was floor coverings. So yes, you can refinish these, you can put as many panels as you want, but the really big difference you're going to see is when you put rugs, or what we ended up doing is modular rugs, where if you get a stain on it, you can pull up the piece and replace it. You could make a giant rug in here with that, and it's not too expensive, and they have very tasteful things that would match the decor. My other comment was with regards to the furniture that had been selected, I don't think it necessarily matches the rustic fixtures and finishes in this space. So I definitely recommend working with the designer on that front because that looked like very modern office furniture almost. Third, my husband and I purchased a very large screen that you can project onto with a very inexpensive projector, which would make it so that everyone here who's sitting here can actually see what is being projected. And it would provide a ton of sound absorption. What you would want to do is raise that stained, stained glass to the panel above. It would block that middle, but it would be there as a permanent installation. My husband could install it for movie nights. And that's another thing you want to consider is maybe not having this for movie nights, I don't know, maybe, I guess it's not technically in the way, but in terms of the wiring, I love the idea of having it route through the furniture itself so that you just plug it in, and then you'll each have an outlet, you could recharge your laptop, whatever, like, that's a really great, great idea. I don't really, I did notice there was a resident comment that said that when the city decided to build this space, one of the reasons the residents signed off on it was because they knew that they would have access to this as a community center. And so I would look into that and see if there's merit in that comment, if that was a promise that was made to the residents to have access to this. You would remember, right, Rudy? Anyway, yeah, that's all, thanks.
Councilor Rosengard.
Lisa just reminded me of something. The whole sales presentation from Chief Ford on the EOC was that we would use it for meetings. So not once tonight did, until Lisa mentioned it, did we talk about why are we not renting out the EOC when it's not being used for police meetings, et cetera?
Oh, I, I, yeah, I would think it could be included, yeah.
Yes, so, I mean, Chief, we do have, we, we have used it in the past for trainings. I believe that's really what it was used, used for. It was going to be so that we could host trainings that then the city and our police officers wouldn't necessarily have to pay for. So it has been used for trainings, I've seen multiple, especially before the pandemic, I would see all sorts of, you know, you'd see, you'd come to work and there'd be, you know, police cars and trucks from all over, so that, it's definitely being utilized. I just don't think we've gone into, you know, residents or other, other entities being able to book it.
Yeah, some have used it, we haven't charged them for it, but there's no reason that it couldn't be, it's a city facility. I mean, you can't access any secure areas from it, so there's no reason that it couldn't be. I mean, other cities use their police training center as, for meetings and things like that.
And then Carolyn, I see you want to speak. The rug, Carolyn and I snickered because we remember the rug.
Well, we did have a rug, and I will say this, when the acoustic guy came in to look at the area, his first comment was, have you considered carpet? So it's, it, that is very true. I know that everybody's, you know, loves the floor and stuff like that, and there is an option to put, you know, carpet tile type things in there, but he said, that's, you mean, this is your hard, super hard surface right here. And so that is something that we may want to consider. And in addition, because we do have high ceilings and stone wall, that you do need the acoustical panels still, but he did say, the first thing, the first thing he was, was have you considered carpet?
We talked for years, we used to have a carpet in here, a rug, and we talked for years about getting rid of it or doing something different because they loved the stained concrete, and now all we're doing is going back because, yes, it is noisy with hard surfaces.
Good evening, Karen Medikis, 36 Pillow Road. A couple of things, Arts Commission has used this space for a lot of community events, and some people don't remember that because we've been in quarantine for two years, but we used it frequently, and we did tango lessons in here and Hungarian dance lessons, and carpet is really hard to dance on. Just want to put that out there. But maybe there's an alternative to the concrete of having some kind of planking that has the, yeah, something else that's easy to, to move on. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, it's come up a lot about alcohol. And one of the things, Wanda, I heard you say about weddings, this would be a great place for weddings. There have been weddings here, but the city has restricted people from being able to bring in alcohol. And that has been an issue with some of those events, and people end up sneaking it in anyway. So I think if we're going to be looking at renting out this space, we might want to consider some kind of a policy on what would be allowed as far as alcohol, what kind of liability rider people would need for the city. Just my thoughts.
To that point, some of the, because there's even been, I think CED has said, well, you know, if we have a city event here, a social event, can there be alcohol? And again, the city would have to change, amend its policy. And in, also in my preliminary research, there are some of the community centers that say, okay, if you do have alcohol at your event, it has to be, you know, you have to have a TABC bartender, or sometimes they just raise the price of the event possibly to, to cover liability for having alcohol. So that can all be, that can be another issue that's addressed when we come back with our, you know, findings, and when we want to present the revised rules and regulations. And also, to your point, Councilmember Rosengard, if you would like, we could also include the EOC as part of the city facilities, and maybe there's a different fee structure for that. Again, it's in a different building, but it's also, you would just, you would pick up a FOB, just like you would for city hall, you'd pick up a FOB, and we'd be able to can say, okay, only give access to, you know, to the EOC. So we could include that in, when we bring back the revised rules, if you would like us to include
Yes.
An option for the EOC.
And it would just be an additional discussion of, do we allow them to use any of our equipment, yes or no? And what do we charge?
Right, right, because they would, over there, to hook up, they would have to hook up, unless you rewired it, you'd have to, you know, use a city computer, and I would not, not be in favor of that. So we'd have to have another options where someone could just take, you know, take an HDMI cord and plug it into their own computer. We wouldn't want them logging on and using city equipment or PCs.
Council, any further discussion on this item? All right, so Council, we're getting to now move into our executive session item, which is the performance and goals evaluation for the city administrator with the outgoing city council. So this is part of an opportunity for us to work with the city administrator. As this council, we'll also have an opportunity to work as the next council as an evaluation process also. So if we can get a motion to move into executive session, Mayor Portem?
So moved.
All right, is there a second for that? All right, all those in favor of moving into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, at this time, as eight or seven, we're going to break for executive session, and we'll reconfigure into open session. We're not expecting to take any actions for those of you that are in attendance. Thank you.
All right, are we good Matt with the feed? Okay. All right, we are recommitting into open session at 8:59 PM and council, we don't have any actions to take from the executive session. We've run out of agenda items so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 8:59 PM. Thank you all for great meeting. Well, how about this, can we give a motion to adjourn from Mayor Pro Tem?
There we go.